Mr. Dunne, I had already went through the opening, so whenever you are ready to call the roll, please do so.
Okay, hold on one second for me.
Sure, I know how you feel. I'm trying to catch my breath.
We've got a lot of moving parts.
How do you unmute your saying?
Go down, go down below to your left, down below. It's a microphone.
You're unmuted now.
We can hear you now, Steve.
Okay, ready.
He can't, he can't hear us.
So, ready for the real call?
I am.
Okay. So, Mr. Chambers?
Hi.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present, so before I turn it over to the city manager, I'm gonna tell Mrs. Chambers you cannot do online anymore. It's in your hands, city manager.
Oh, thank you. Mayor Council tonight, we've got two presentations to come before you. One is from the Milletville Housing Authority, and I'll introduce Mr. Corcoran in just a minute. And the other is from our local chapter of NAACP, who wants to do a presentation for you and share a request with you. Mr. Jordan, the mayor and myself have been communicating with the Milletville Housing Authority fairly regularly in the last six to eight weeks. And one of the things that's come out of that conversation, as well as some information that has come from HUD, is the need for the city to sign off on a plan to assist the Milletville Housing Authority. Not for the city to assist them, but for HUD to understand that we know what's going on there and to be documented that we know what's going on there. So, we asked the acting executive director to come in and do a presentation for y'all to do two things. First of all, to let you know what's going on with the Housing Authority. And second of all, to let you know what this plan is all about, that HUD is asking for the city to sign off on and to give you the opportunity to answer, ask any questions of him based on that plan, as well as anything else that's going on at the Housing Authority that you may be interested in knowing. So with that, I'm gonna call John Corcoran to the podium. He has a presentation for you that should show on your screen and also is being projected. So hopefully those of you that are joining us on Zoom can see his presentation as he goes through it. But John, introduce yourself. Give us some more information about your background and where you're coming from, and then go straight into your presentation.
Okay. Good evening. My name is John Corcoran. I am the acting executive director of the Milletville Housing Authority, and I've been in that position since about January 2nd of this year. So my background is I have been in affordable housing and HUD projects for over 20 years now. I am currently employed with the, also currently employed with the DeKalb County Housing Authority, the affiliate. Are you able to hear me all right? Okay. You never know with this mask. So I work for the DeKalb County Housing Authority. It's affiliate called the Housing Development Corporation of DeKalb. And we work together with other housing authorities across the state and across other states to help implement plans. So what I was asked today was to give, start with basically a background of the Housing Authority, realizing that not everybody may understand the Housing Authority's function, where it is and its current status, so we can go through that. And then we'll talk next about the recovery agreement. So we can go through those steps, if you like. So first, I'll start with kind of about the Housing Authority. Most people don't realize, but the Housing Authority is a quasi-state entity. Housing Authorities are created under the Official Code of Georgia, Section 8, 3.4. Housing Authorities operate independently from the city or county. The only connection is, in this case, the mayor appoints the commissioners under that same Georgia code. Our current commissioners are Owen Pittman, Dexter Ricks, Deborah Arnold, Benjamin Lewis, Feneta Martin, and Randy Clark. And he's our resident commissioner. Currently, the staff is myself as the interim executive director, Jennifer Smith as the finance, and Sean DeJoyner as executive assistant. We have six people at the property level, which is Adriana Turner is the property manager, Deborah Washington is the assistant property manager, Anitra Stine is assistant property manager, Latia Simmons is leasing, Frank Wells, and Hunter Geisinger are maintenance techs. We currently own and operate three properties. Ray Court Apartments, which is 119 units. Habersham Apartments, which is 30 units. And Graham Homes, which is 166 units. And please feel free to stop me if you have questions. This is interactive. It makes it much easier. So several years ago, HUD came out with a new program called the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, which basically allowed public housing authorities convert from HUD control to private control. And that's one of the misconceptions that a lot of people don't have, or misconception people have about housing authorities, is they don't realize that housing authorities don't own the buildings or the land that they sit on. They have them in a deed of trust, subject to HUD's approval. For example, you can't borrow against real estate. You can't do anything without HUD's prior permission. And so that's what they're trying to do, is change the model of how HUD operates. So previously, the public housing, you would receive what's called an annual contributions contract, where you'd receive funding, monthly funding from HUD that goes first to pay overhead, and then whatever is left over was used for property operations. The new model, which they call RAD, is basically a Section 8 contract, which is the funding pays for the property first, and overhead is paid out of surplus cash from its operations. Currently, Ray and Habersham have converted from HUD to private control. It's set up in the name of Elite Choice Properties. And Elite Choice Properties is a nonprofit affiliated with Milletville Housing Authority. Graham is scheduled to convert this fall, and I have details later in the presentation to go over that. And it's basically a change in model, business model, that the Housing Authority has. Housing Authorities funded solely by HUD operate public housing. And what the model that we're moving to is the Housing Authority will own real estate, develop real estate, manage properties, provide resident services, and issue bonds. And those will become its new revenue sources going forward. The future org chart is very much the same as what it is now, which is the commissioner, board of commissioners, executive director. And then we'll be doing property management, resident services, and finance. And what I've put together is just a basic business, a cash flow, what we've, what the projected financials look like over the next several years, because one of the things I wanted to work with the board on is to show that changing this model is they become a sustainable operation. And I'd be willing to go in more detail with you guys on this in the future, but this is currently the income and expenses that we are projecting for the next five years. And so the company will look somewhat like what you'll see on the org chart above. You'll have Milletville Housing Authority, which will have a dotted line. And basically, all that means is that the Housing Authority will control those, but they don't own them directly, because no one can own a nonprofit corporation, but you have a revisionary right. So Elite Choice Properties will own Ray and Habersham. MHA Orchard Hill Landing GP, Inc. will be a general partner in a tax credit, tax credit deal to refinance or to renovate Graham Homes. And Futures Bright is the resident services nonprofit that was set up. Again, Ray and Habersham converted to RAD in 2018. Owned by a nonprofit, Elite Choice Properties, were revisionary rights to MHA. The current board members are also the commissioners of MHA. Ray and Habersham were supposed to have received a minor renovation of about $13,000 a unit back in 2018. Unfortunately, those repairs were not done. We are in the process of working on that now. Graham Homes, we are scheduled to convert to RAD in fall of 2020 in partnership with the Housing Development Corporation, with involvement from the Kresge Foundation, South Face, Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and Georgia Health Policy Center. MHA will be a co-general partner, co-developer, and co-manager in the property. Graham Homes, the property will be a combination of new construction and rehabilitation. Unfortunately, we wanted to redo all of the buildings or tear down all the buildings and start new. We just were not able to raise enough money to do that. So the compromise that we have been able to come up with is we'll renovate 116 of those units. They will receive about $70,000 worth of work in there. And it's basically taking the insides back to the studs and redoing it again. All we're basically keeping is the exterior structure. And then we'll construct 55 new units along the frontage there. The rehabilitation will include Section 3 requirements for, requirements for small, women, and minority-owned businesses. The total development cost to do all this work will be about $33 million. And MHA will also have some additional land at the back of the property that it'll be able to use for future development if it chooses. Here's a site plan of what we're talking about doing. And I cannot read that far up there. So this map, it's kind of oriented the way it is, north-south on here. You'll see the building, the new buildings on the left side of the street there. And we'll be renovating the buildings going back. Once you get to the creek, which is about halfway back, that's where the development will end. And that'll be where the second phase of the development, if the Housing Authority chooses to do that, would be a new development back there as well.
To the left is Jefferson Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you're right. So the sources of funds that we have, we have about $7 million in taxes and bonds that we'll be issuing for the renovation. We'll receive a federal and Georgia state tax credit in the amount of $16,500,000. We'll receive a home loan from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs in the amount of $3 million. DeKalb County has agreed to put $2 million of its own capital funds into the transaction to make it work, as well as $1 million from MHA's capital funds. And then a seller note going back to the authority of $4.2 million. This spaghetti chart is the best way to say a tax credit deal. So what it does is in the middle, you'll see Orchard Hill Landing Partners LP, which will be the limited partnership, which will own or control the property. It'll actually be a land lease from the Milletville Housing Authority. So Milletville Housing Authority will retain ownership of the land and the buildings. The partnership will actually just lease the improvements from the Housing Authority. The developers will be the Milletville Housing Authority and Housing and Development Corporation of DeKalb. And the general partnership, the general partner will be made up of the Housing Development Corporation and MHA. In a partnership, they will own .01% of the transaction. And we will sell off tax credits to an investor that will sell off 99.99% of the partnership interest to that investor. So, and I know we went through this pretty quickly. What questions do you have? What questions can I answer?
How do all these improvements affect the bottom-line cost for residents in these housing authorities?
It will not impact the residents at all. They are all, so the only way it will impact a resident is if their income changes. So 100% of the residents of the property receive a Section 8 contract. And they will pay no more than, I think it's no more than 30% of their income in rent, subject to some minimum, if I remember right, the minimum's like $50 or $75 a month they have to pay. So if their income changes, their percentage of the rent will change, but the overall rent for the property will not change.
What's other, what sort of other amenities or property improvements will be available to improve the quality of life for individuals living in these neighborhoods?
So we are putting, I'll go back a couple slides. And it's hard to see, but in the middle of the site plan there, there'll be a new community building that's being built. We're also adding playgrounds, as well as fitness center, computer labs, and those types of things that are not currently on the property.
Explain to me about the part, what you said about the women and small businesses.
So part of the funding that we receive, actually several parts, and I'll get back.
You passed by it?
Yep, I did.
Right there. Go back one. Right there.
It's a little touchy. All right. So for all the construction work that we'll do at the site, we have federal requirements from both the home loan that we are receiving, as well as the capital funds from DeKalb County and Milletville Housing Authority, will require participation. So the general contractor will be required to publish and solicit bids from local contractors, as well as small business, women, and minority-owned businesses, as well as provide a training aspect. In the past, we've worked with different technical colleges to provide a supply of employees that would be willing to work as laborers or tradesmen at the site.
Okay. Is that all the questions?
Okay.
Would you be able to provide a copy of this, this presentation to us afterwards?
Yep.
I actually have it. I can print it. Put it in your box.
Thank you.
So now we'll move on to the second part, which is the part about the reason why we need a recovery agreement. And I'm titled as the bad news. MHA has been through five executive directors in the past two years. HUD has determined that commissioners have been too involved with the day-to-day operations. HUD has deemed MHA a troubled housing authority. And Graham Homes failed its property inspection conducted by HUD by not meeting housing quality standards and having excessive vacancies. Continue. So MHA and Graham are under a corrective action plan with HUD. Ray and Habersham have failed RAD conversion with excessive vacancies at 26%. Ray and Habersham barely started the renovations from 2018. HUD has determined that there was improper use of federal funds and the lack of accounting controls, including commingling of funds. Good news. I promise there's good news. Since January 2020, Owen Pittman is now the chair, and Dexter Ricks is now the vice chair, and have been providing leadership and guidance to MHA. Mr. Pittman and Mr. Ricks have brought on myself through a contract with DeKalb County Housing Authority to work through some of these issues. And I'm proud to say that MHA has corrected all the commingling of funds, and we have paid back all the improperly spent funds. So we're working through this. We started renovation Ray and Habersham, and hopefully we'll start, we're on track to start increasing occupancy. It's at June. We had a few fits, but in July, we are now starting to, we'll have our first set of buildings delivered this week. And we'll hopefully start occupying them in the upcoming weeks. We have also, since this has been written, we've actually opened a waiting list for Ray and Habersham. Previously, when I came on, I was told that the waiting list was full, and it had years of people on it. When I did some additional digging, we found that there were only 80 names on the waitlist. Our first pass-through, we eliminated all but 14, because no one responded. We sent out correspondences, as required by HUD. No one responded. We were left with 14 people on the waitlist. We have since published notice that we are opening the waitlist for both Graham Homes, as well as Ray and Habersham. And we are starting to get good interest. We're getting about at least one applicant a day coming in, seeking housing. We've restarted the RAD transaction for Graham. The financing plan is due to HUD in July, and actually, we just submitted it. And they approved, not approved, but they set us up with their concept meeting to go over our financing plan, to go over, to do the renovations and improvements at Graham. And currently, the tentative, tentative scheduled closing is October of 2020. That is subject to change, as we know. MHA is complying with all the terms of the corrective action plans at Graham. And we're on track to correct the failing property inspection. I was saying in June, COVID kind of put us a little bit behind. We are, we've actually started the improvements on 29 units out there in June. We'll start another 29 in August. And we are working on the 78 occupied units as we speak. So we are moving through about three to five units a week to get through that process. It'll take us about six months to go through and correct all the deficiencies in the units. The reason for today's meeting. While MHA is making good progress on the corrective action plan, correcting physical deficiencies and financial accounting, HUD is requiring MHA and the city to sign a recovery agreement. And part of the reason they're doing this is it takes HUD about two years to build a case to get to a recovery agreement. And they have gotten to this point, and they don't want to let that moment slip by and have to start again. What is the recovery agreement? HUD is basically indicating if all the findings are not corrected or in progress of being corrected, that HUD will take actions to take control of the funding and the property operations from MHA. As noted at the beginning of the presentation, the mayor has the ability to appoint commissioners, ask them to resign or remove commissioners. And I've put on there legally difficult. And I think Mr. Jordan will agree that it is almost impossible in the state of Georgia for a mayor to do that. So that makes what, some of this recovery agreement very difficult to sign. HUD may ask the mayor to exercise these options prior to taking control of MHA. The recovery agreement will end when HUD, when MHA fully converts to RAD or all the requirements are met. So right now, we are working on a dual track. So we are working, we are trying to close the RAD transaction before the end of this year. And we're also on track to make all the physical corrections at Graham, probably before January of 2021. So we're making progress. I'm sending weekly updates to HUD on Ray and Habersham, and I send monthly updates on Graham to HUD, two different departments within HUD. And to date, they're still pleased, but they are still seeking this recovery agreement. Any questions you have for me?
When you spend this money to upgrade them, and I do know that they need that, but when you do spend that to upgrade them, what kind of plan do you have in place that, say, an inspector or somebody can go in and not let them get into a failure?
Yes. So we, as the MHA, in conjunction with the other company that I run, the Housing Development Corporation, or a HUD-approved manager, property manager, and we have sets of rules that we are required to go in and do inspections on a regular basis to provide, make sure that housekeeping is being done in appropriate manners, and to make sure that any damage that we find is being charged to the resident, if it's caused by the resident. Obviously, if it's a defect of the unit, it's not charged to the resident. But just upholding those rules are gonna be how we maintain that.
Have you sent those updates to Mr. Jordan, Mr. Griffith, and myself that you sent up?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I'll call you tomorrow, because I need to get with you on some things.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll give you a call. Mr. Jordan, I'll bring you up to speed on that.
Well, thank you so much. Please feel free to give me a call if you have any questions.
Next on our presentations tonight is Cynthia Ward Edwards, president of the local NAACP chapter. There you are. Come onto the podium, and I think most of these people know you, so no introduction is necessary, but thank you for being here with us tonight.
Okay. Thank y'all for having us here.
How are you?
Let me give those last two to Mr. Dunne, so he'll have them for the other council. He's not here.
The chair is in the office. Thank you.
I'm gonna paraphrase from what you all have tonight, this evening. But respectfully to the Honorable Mayor Copeland, mayor. This, to Mayor Protem, and to the City of Milletville Council, and also to Mr. Hank Griffith, the city manager, and all those in your respective place. I'm Cynthia Ward Edwards, and I am the local chapter president for NAACP 5169. And I'm here with a couple of my executive board members. I want to raise your hand. So the reason we're here tonight is we have asked respectfully that we have a naming, the renaming of, for the Honorable Floyd L. Griffin, Jr., who was the first African-American mayor elected to the office of mayor for the city of Milletville. Our request includes the following. Can y'all hear me okay? Am I kind of?
You're coming in good and clear.
Okay. The renaming of the street known as McIntosh Street, located within the city of Milletville, to be, to be named Floyd L. Griffin, Jr. Street, and dedicated to the accomplishment and service of the former mayor Floyd L. Griffin, Jr. Additionally, naming the plaza on said street, known as the Black Heritage Plaza, to be renamed after the former mayor Floyd L. Griffin, Jr. As I'm sure everyone knows, his history, what I want to tell you a little bit about it, he's a native of Milletville, Georgia, and has served our community well over the years. He was born here in Milletville in what is known as Shotgun House. And I don't know how many of y'all old enough to know what a shotgun house is. He graduated from Baldwin High School, Body High School. He continued his career at Tuskegee Institute, now known as Tuskegee University. He was involved in the civil rights movement in Alabama. Griffin, Jr. served in the Army for 23 years, and is a veteran who came back home to work in the family business and to serve the citizens of Milletville, Baldwin County. Later, he became involved in politics by using his knowledge and skills and making a difference in his home community. He has reached back to serve as a mentor and servant for the community. Below are a few of the accolades we can mention in short form. He was the former Georgia State Senator for District 25, the 25th district, Colonel, US Army, retired, former co-owner of Slater's Funeral Home, Inc., serves as the Board of Trustees at Georgia College and State University in Milletville, and ducked into the Winston-Salem State University Clarence E. Bighouse Gaines Athletic Hall of Faith and Tuskegee University ROTC Hall of Fame. His oral video is inducted as a permanent record of history makers' collections at the Liberia Congress. And he is also a local author of two books that he's written. Both the Plaza and McIntosh Street, at one time, were African-American hubs of black enterprise and entertainment. And we feel that it's important that our children see images that are reflective of our rich history and diverse culture in our community. McIntosh Street extends from Riverbean Apartments, where Green Baptist Church is located, to Presley, McIntosh, Allen's Market, and Black Heritage Plaza, through Georgia College, and ends in West End. And I think that's where you guys are now, over in the West End area. All this area apart from Georgia College is located within a predominantly- There are no streets in downtown Milichville named after African-American. And the Black African-American Plaza located on McIntosh Street, former mayor Griffin was very instrumental in establishing the Plaza. He wanted to leave for the history of African-Americans. Former Mayor Junior has served and did contributions to Milichville. He served on the Board of Trustees for Georgia College and State University. He serves on the Board of Trustees of Georgia College and State University. Both former mayor and his wife continues to make contributions to charitable organizations in Milichville. Former Mayor Floyd L. Griffin signifies what our community should be proud as it relates to his achievements and accomplishments on a local, state, and national level. With everything that has been presented this evening, I could go on and on because he has so many accolades and achievements, but wanted to try to keep it close to our hometown. But with everything that has been presented this evening, NAACP 5169, we understand that it is not solely about the former mayor Floyd Griffin, but about dedicating and preserving African-American history in Milichville, Georgia, and the legacy of history makers for generations and generations to come. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Dr. Lee or Mr. Chambers, did you have any questions?
No.
None, I don't have any.
Nor do I.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms., Madam President. Thank you so much for the presentation. Wealthy knowledge, some of it I didn't know.
For the remainder of my report, I just want to remind everybody about a couple of things, and then we've got a potential draft ordinance to discuss in terms of the potential for looking at it for the city. You all just got that ordinance in your package tonight, so obviously, we will deal with it as you see fit, but I have no intentions of asking y'all to do anything with it tonight from a passive standpoint unless that's the direction that you all want to head. But before I get ahead of myself, let me just remind you of a couple of things. I shared this with you all in an email, but I want to just reiterate the fact that our first phase of the water system transfer took place on July 6, and it ended up being approximately 450 customers that were made to transition in the Plantation Chase subdivision as well as the neighborhood around the Baldwin County Regional Airport. There were no problems of significance that occurred based on that transition for customers. We had a couple of calls about some discoloration and those kinds of things, which is to be expected when you have that major of a transfer over. But we directed those folks soon to contact with, with the county, and based on what I hear, they got those situations rectified. I'm in the process now, as I shared with you in the email, of determining what percentage of the total customers that were transferred to them that is, and once that percentage is determined, it looks like it's going to be right around 35%, once that percentage is determined, we will then be invoicing the county for that percentage of the water system infrastructure that was turned over to them as per the service delivery strategy negotiations where that water and sewer agreement came from. Not really sure what the next area will be in terms of Phase Two. The Phase One area that was done was certainly the easiest in terms of being able to turn some valves on and turn some valves off, but we will have the other areas coming up. Obviously, the 365-day window is what's there, that actually started on July 1, and we will have to do some master meter installations as well as some valve inserts, as we discussed when we were negotiating that water and sewer agreement to get some of the other areas transferred, but we will certainly work towards that end. Also, I got a call from Mike Couch this morning, and he asked me to share with you all that there's been a little bit of a change in the schedule for the ribbon cutting on the Palm Kitchen on the 23rd. It's going to have to be moved up about 30 minutes from what was originally thought based on the governor's schedule. So he is asking for anyone who plans to be there to please be in the dining room there at the Palm Kitchen by 11:30 on the morning of the 23rd.
Hank, they need to let him know a day or two ahead of time.
Right, if you had not RSVP'd, please do that by the end of this week, is what he's Also, just let me remind you all, we talked about it, I think it was maybe January, and then, you know, we got, we started making some progress on service delivery and got involved in that, and then our pandemic situation came along, but we do still currently have a pending ethics complaint that needs to be addressed, and that ethics board needs to be appointed. All three members need to either be reappointed or new members appointed in their place. As I shared with you when we talked about it in January, two, one of the previous members is willing to serve, another one of the previous members said she would serve, but she might want to talk about maybe just being an alternate as opposed to being the regular member. We have one other individual who has given some interest in, in being interested in serving. So what I would like to do is email those people to you by the end of this week, and if you would email me back anyone else that you had interest in being considered for that board, and I would love to be able to, to come before you through Mr. Jordan on the 28th to have a committee, a board reappointed, so that we can, we can bring that ethics complaint that is pending to some closure.
Mr. Griffith, is this the board that we split appointments or collectively?
You, help me out here, Mr. Jordan. You have an appointment, mayor, council has an appointment, and then you have an appointment that both agree on, is that correct?
That's right.
Has to be confirmed.
Okay. So in other words, once you send that out, we just need to kind of collaborate?
You all will be asked to amend the agenda of the regular meeting at 6:30 to add a resolution whereby we will be extending another 60 days the period for being able to have called and regular meetings via teleconference or video conference. That will continue based on the pandemic situation, and you'll also be asked to amend the agenda to add a closed session to discuss a pending legal matter at the end of that meeting. So you all have the resolution extending the teleconference and video conference plans that basically extends two previous resolutions or one previous resolution is extended of the original resolution, but there's nothing new in that other than just the extension of that situation or process through the next 60 days. You also have a draft resolution. Well, actually, let me back up and say, I emailed y'all at the beginning of the week, but just let me remind you that in terms of what we are doing with our pandemic operations plan with staff, is all staff in city facilities are having to wear masks when they are outside of their individual offices, in common areas in the city facilities, when there's more than one person in the city vehicle, or anywhere else where the six-feet distance requirement cannot be met, sometimes that might even be outside if we've got, say, utility maintenance workers working down in the hole, same hole and those kinds of things. So we are currently doing that with, with staff. Some of you have shared that you would be interested in looking into the possibility of a citywide mask ordinance, and in discussing that with mayor and Mr. Jordan, Mr. Jordan put together the draft ordinance that you have in front of you. This is, was basically put together by looking at ordinance from Athens, Clark, Savannah, an ordinance template the GMA put out for requirement of masks in city facilities by everybody, which is actually something else that we could look at if, if your appetite for the citywide ordinance is, is not where it needs to be at this point in time. But I wanted to, to give you that draft tonight, start the discussion on this tonight, to determine if this was an ordinance that we need to bring up either on the 28th or in a call meeting before that, if that's y'all's pleasure. Mr. Jordan put the ordinance together, y'all have it to read, and mayor, I'll just, that's, that's the end of my report. I'll turn it back over to you to see if we have any discussion on that particular draft ordinance at this point in time, or if there are any questions for me.
Can I go back a step from this?
Sure.
To when you was talking about the mask, and so is that, that mask pertains to any town we're inside this building, or you're inside a city building, you have to wear the mask? Is that just employees only, or likely have people?
It's employees only at this point in time. If it's anyone else, it would be required from a resolution or an ordinance from council.
Okay. So, because I was just wondering, as people come into the meeting, do we want them to have on masks? Do you have them outside of the?
They are available, and we can recommend it, but at this point in time, there's no requirement.
Okay. As far as the ordinance related to the COVID-19 and the discussion of possibility of moving to, an ordinance to mandate the, the wearing of a mask, is that something we want to table? You want to take this ordinance home and read through it thoroughly and table it to the next meeting, Mr. Jordan?
I'd like to take it home and read it and us have a discussion on it before we try to put it in place.
So would you like to call for it the next meeting, or do you want to have a call work session to discuss it next meeting?
We could discuss it at the next meeting after we've had time to read it and go through it, because it was just handed to us when we came in.
Is that the pleasure of everybody up here? I like to have everybody vocal. Your vote counts for you. Is that everybody's pleasure?
I would certainly like the opportunity to review this.
Okay. What's my others? You want to take it home? Michelle, you want to take yours off? And I heard you, Dr.
Council members that hasn't even seen it, the ones that are on.
It wasn't intended for you to act on it.
You weren't, I didn't figure it was, because normally it's in our box or in our book, and it wasn't, so.
I just got through.
Doing it.
Putting it together.
Putting it all together.
Are we going to discuss it tonight? Are you talking about discussing it? Do we have time? I don't have it. Is it a possibility to, to discuss it tonight, or do we need to wait, Mr. Jordan?
We're at 6:20, so we've.
Oh, we don't have to.
6:20, we got time.
Like Mr. Griffith said, it, it actually is modeled after the ordinance that was adopted in Athens. I talked with the city attorney of Athens. He actually modeled it after the ordinance that was kind of Savannah, and then added, as Hank mentioned, added some provisions that GMA has put out for city buildings, local government building, requiring masks to be mandatory for both anybody that's in the building. And so, we just put that.
Is it in here? Who would enforce it, or how it would be enforced? I mean, I haven't had a chance.
Yes, it's enforced by, to be enforced by the city police department, code enforcement. Those would be, as far as the city goes, those would be the only two that would have that policing authority to issue a, basically a civil, like a code violation, and they would have an opportunity. The first defense is $25, the second is 50, the third was 100. As long as you are responsive, you don't necessarily have to come to court, as long as you're responsive and pay the fine, so it remains a civil matter. If someone, according to this ordinance, if someone refuses to cooperate, someone doesn't pay the fine, then of course, they would have to appear for a, in this report.
Okay, of course, everybody, I think, know right now, we're in full participation with the county as far as putting out signs. If you saw, if you have seen the billboards, trying to encourage, follow the governor's Georgia promise, encouraging others to wear your mask, do the CDC requirements, hand washing, and all of those things that they have already stated, so I do have, I guess we'll talk about it later. I was, Mr. Craig sent over a press release that he wanted me to engage in with him, but I shared with him I needed to bring it before council because I couldn't answer on behalf of the whole council, so at some point, Mr. Jordan, can we, do, can I, do we need to go talk about that a little later so we can give him an answer tomorrow?
I'm happy you're welcome to discuss it before this.
Okay, so we have a few minutes. And basically, his request is, did you bring yours, Mr. Griffith?
Uh, no, let me see, I may have it on my phone.
That's what I was trying to find out. While he's looking that up, I did notice that one thing on this ordinance on page six, where it says public place, and Hank mentioned the city buildings, I see everything else mentioned except that. When you're talking about commercial establishments, stores, but it doesn't mention anything about public buildings, such as city buildings, city facilities. What was that, Miss, Michelle, I didn't quite understand. I was just saying, on, on page six, where it talks about public place and everything that's down below that, would that be where we would go back and include public buildings, such as city hall?
I think they're covered, but.
Think they're covered?
There's a separate, I mean, all of the buildings. But there's also, GMA also has a separate ordinance for, they have model ordinance for city.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll look at that. Like I said, I was just trying to get y'all something.
Yeah, I just didn't see it identified separately.
But it may, it may not, maybe exactly what you need to.
So I cannot seem to find that on my phone. I don't know if you found it, Mr. Griffith, but basically, it is just to, to continue to reinforce the wearing of the mask, making sure you're complying with CDC regulations as to hand washing, disinfecting, sanitizing, and all of the listed items that CDC has already. of the listed items that CDC has already listed, and just to continue to encourage within our community to wear a face mask at all times in the public places. So if you all are okay with that, because I tried to make sure you all know that I'm kind of cooperating with him on something, that it will require all of our signature to go out on letterhead. If you all are okay with that, I just wanted to make sure.
I'd like to, if you get it together, I'd like to read it.
We can see it. You have it.
And I can forward it to everyone. Basically, what it is, is it's, if you are familiar with the Georgia safety promise that the governor was putting, is putting out or has put out to try to encourage following of CDC regulations, it is a press release stating that Baldwin County, and if the city signs on, the City of Milledgeville is supportive of the Georgia safety promise as put forth by the governor. I've actually found the email from Mr. Tobar that he sent me, but for some reason, the attachment is not showing there. But that's what it is. But I can get it, I can get it to everyone tonight as soon as we get finished with this meeting, and if everybody has it in their email box, if you'll check, no more than about 30 minutes after the meeting's over.
That would be great.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Attorney Jordan, if you wouldn't mind, would you send out the template from GMA regarding the public buildings requiring masks in public buildings? Thank you.
If you have a GMA website, you can go on it and see it.
Well, if Mr. Jordan's got it handy.
Well, there's some things, you know, just since the conference, that probably everybody need to go on GMA website and just take a look at it in your spare time will be helpful. Okay, is there anything else?
Me and myself and Mr. Jordan will get that out. We all.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Is there anything else to discuss that needs to be brought before?
Question.
Sure.
On that ethic, given on ethic, what the requirement, does the city resident, be on ethic board?
I want to say I believe that you.
I was just looking at it today.
I want to say, Ms. Melvin, that you're supposed to be a city resident to be on the ethics board.
You have to be a city resident.
Any other questions? All right then. If there's no other questions or nothing else to discuss before this body, I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.